Okay, we're on. Good, thank you. It's nice and loud, too. I like it that way. It's easier for everybody to hear in this hall. Hello, I'm Suzanne Ryan. I'm the chairman, and I am going to call a meeting to order May 7, 2025 at 6:05. And this meeting is a meeting of the zoning board of adjustments. I'd like to introduce the members. The voting members tonight are myself, Suzanne Ryan, Chair, Audrey Klein, Vice Chair, at the end of the table, Chuck Sumner, who is the clerk, Jody Persons is a voting member, and Sabette Strowman is an alternate. Sabette, will you sit tonight and be a voting member?
Yes.
Thank you. And Kate McMahon is excused. Also in attendance tonight, we have our interim planner, Shawna Saunders, and thank you for coming and helping us with a couple of these items. We did have a meeting with our attorney before this meeting started. Tonight, we have four cases, three of which are continued variances from April 7, and that's Sewell Road, and Brenetta, and Arsenal. They're all variances. We have one new case tonight, which is Rollings Ford, and it's an appeal of administrative decision over on Lerner Street. All have had site visits. And just a note, when I close the public comment or the public hearing, we typically do not reopen that. So if you really want to say something, make sure I see your hand. And everyone's welcome to speak. Chuck, would you please read the legal notice of the first case for Sewell Road, which is a continuance? And we did do a site visit on that.
Madam Chair, are we not going to do minutes first?
Thank you, but I've got some issues with that set of minutes. And thank you for bringing it to my attention. We'll do those at the end.
Okay, thanks.
One item also that I should point out is that I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Nancy Strowman for Sabette as a three-year term as alternate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you. You're all set, Sabette. Okay, so now, Chuck, would you...
The first case is on 180 Sewell Road, LLC, TAPX MAP 229-30, 180 Sewell Road, case number 05V25, public hearing for a variance under Section 175-43A1C, expansion and extension, structures of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance, continuation of formal submission and public hearing from April 7, 2025.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Tonight, we have with us Shawna Saunders, and I'd like to introduce her and perhaps summarize where we are with this continuance, and any correspondence you may feel you'd like to share.
Sure. So I was not in attendance at the last meeting, but I did watch the meeting video. And I understood that the board wanted some legal interpretation of basically how to proceed. There were some questions about what section of the ordinance was appropriate. And so we did meet with legal counsel in a non-meeting, immediately preceding this meeting. And he was able to give us some input. And Madam Chair, you want me to go through exactly what he went over with us?
Yes, and this is a continuance, so the meeting is open. And if you would go through that, and then we'll take a comment from the applicant that I don't see that...
I think the applicant's over there.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, in the back. And then we'll take public comment.
Yep. So the applicant submitted an application for Section 175-43A1C of the zoning ordinance. And that section of the ordinance had to do with non-conforming structures. And I think the board had questions about that at the last meeting. And when we spoke with our legal counsel, the feedback that we received was that because the application was raising the structures and rebuilding them in a conforming manner, they were formally non-conforming because they were within setbacks, including the shore land. Because after they were raising them, when they rebuilt them, they would be conforming and meet those setbacks, that section of the ordinance was not applicable, the section having to do with non-conforming structures. However, there is a section of the ordinance that has to do with non-conforming uses. This property has two single-family homes on one lot, which is not in allowed use in the Shoreland District. A single-family home isn't allowed use. And so because there were two, that non-conforming use section of the ordinance, which is 175-43B, sorry, sorry, 175-43A2, comes into play. And I think that is where we left it. And so the board is here to, I guess, discuss that and make a decision on how best to proceed.
I'd like to hear from the applicant at this time. And if you'd restate your name again and so forth. Also, did you receive the email from Shawna that was sent out, I believe, Friday?
Correct.
Summarizing this information. Yeah, yeah, okay. Would the applicant, you've digested this, and would the applicant be inclined to withdraw their application?
Hi, I'm here with Suzanne Ryan. Turn the mic off.
Where's?
It's on.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Amy Bentley, the architect that's working on this project. This is Andy Allen, the homeowner. And also with us is Randy Tetra from Norway Plains. So we would like, with your permission, to continue discussing this property. I feel that what we applied for, although maybe the wrong section number, is still pertinent to what our application and what we were applying for. It was under advisement of the building inspector that we apply under the structure rather than use. So I was specifically told that that was the section I needed to apply under. I did want to address the last, at the last meeting, it wasn't in question what, as far as two single-family units that we were discussing. Audrey brought up that she was interpreting it more as a primary house with a non-conforming accessory structure. So I am understanding that that interpretation is not on the table at all, and we are specifically discussing a continuation of a non-conforming use.
So I think, and I apologize, the second piece that we talked about with legal counsel is that because this is an expansion of a non-conforming use then, over the 25%, that yes, a variance is required. And so I think, I don't know if that answers your question. And then, and then just to speak a little bit further about the chairwoman's request to withdraw, I think the thought process is that the application was submitted under 175-43A1C, which is the structure portion of the ordinance, which I do understand in conversations with staff at the time. May have been part of the discussion. It was actually not the section that the denial was based on, but it was part, the structure discussion was part of the discussion of the denial. Is that that's wrong, right? So that according to the legal counsel advice to the ZBA, that section is wrong. And so the argument, the five criteria, is probably wrong. And so the board can proceed reviewing this application or give you the option to withdraw and resubmit per the legal advice of the use variance instead.
I feel like my application would be the same because my, all my language in there has to do with an expansion of a non-conforming use, even though we're talking about expansion of building footprint, right? I feel like the application would essentially be the same with the adjustment to the number that we were applying under.
I think your application would be very close to the same. The issue is that the number applied for is not a use number, but the building number. So from a record-keeping standpoint, even from a legal standpoint, we would, we need to listen to the use section and not the building section, unfortunately. It doesn't so much go to whether the argument makes sense. It's more or less a paperwork issue.
And are we not able to adjust it at the meeting and agree on the adjustment? Or do you...
That would be good, but I don't think that technically and legally we can.
So the legal notice was for the section having to do with the structure. So the notice to the abutters and the newspaper all cited a different section that you're asking for a variance from. So it is, it's completely a legal technicality.
So let me, let me jump in here. So was saying they have to go through the whole process? It'd be pushed off to the next meeting? They would have to do all the paperwork with the new numbers on it?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's the legal way it has to be done. They can't fill out another piece of paper and do it tonight? They have to go and go through the, jump through the whole?
Well, I mean, really, it's just the part on the application that has the section number. And then the discussion about how you calculated either both buildings together as being non-conforming, or, as you pointed out, I was saying only one building was the non-conforming aspect. And I think that's what you just asked earlier, just now?
Well, are we throwing that out entirely? The primary structure versus, in a primary structure and a guest house, we're looking at this as one project. We have two buildings with living space in them. It's about 3,000 square feet in footprint. And that's, that's the number that we're looking at.
So I believe our advice was that they're not, the proposal is not for both buildings to be non-conforming. So that your 25% calculation should only be on that second building that makes the property non-conforming. And whatever the number is over that 25% is what the variance is that you're asking for.
I think that the planning, that the planner's interpretation is that it's on the two buildings.
That's the way we have proceeded.
It's a two, I could essentially...
I thought our discussion with the attorney was not aligned with that.
My understanding is...
Meaning the 20, let me just...
I'm sorry.
So their application was for the square foot of the original house, plus the square foot of the second dwelling unit was their basis of non-conformance.
Right.
And then they were going to calculate 25% of that, under which would be a special exception, over which would be a variance.
Right. And I know we talked about the second floor, so the second floor...
I think that's out of, kind of out of the, that's into the use discussion, not how you approached the original calculations.
Which was discussed with legal counsel? It may have been when I was...
I thought, I thought we did discuss that. And his opinion was that...
It didn't matter. I thought it was irrelevant, the second and third and fourth and fifth floor.
It doesn't have to do with the floors. It has to do with the calculation going, going in in the beginning, the calculation of what 25% of the non-conforming is. And since we're talking about the non-conforming use of just the second building, I thought, and your opinion was...
Up to, up to 25%, not 25% and more.
Either, either way, it's the initial calculation. What did you get from our conversation? Do you, do you have an opinion on...
Yes.
Okay.
That instead of non-conforming structure, we approached it as a non-conforming use.
Use.
Now, in that light, the new main house is going to be completely within conforming boundaries.
It's also a conforming use, but...
It's a conforming use, and it's a conforming structure. And he doesn't need a variance for that. The only variance required is for the guest house.
I may have the quote from what he said.
So let me finish. So the line of thinking was that the non-conforming use applies to the second home, the guest house.
You wrote down...
I think I have this quote. I think I, I think I captured this.
Let me just say, it doesn't matter that much to me because it's just a number, which will be approving or not approving based on the calculations. I just, it would be nice to have us all in some kind of agreement.
The thought was that the non-conforming use would be still granted, but the variance is required for the size of the building because it is more than 25% of the original guest house.
I get that. What did you get?
Well, what I wrote down, and I think I captured what he said, is in summary, the non-conforming use remains, even though moving and expand, even though you're, you're moving the buildings and, the two, the two buildings, I guess, and expanding. A variance is needed for the 25% plus. The 25% kicks in because of the expansion of use.
But what is it 25% of? I'm very confused on what number are we looking for? Because...
Right.
The interpretation I got from the planning department was that we are taking a guest building at...
It was cumulative.
Sorry, 671 square feet in a, in a, well, two houses. We have two single-family houses. 671 and 2,420. And that our 20, any project that we want to do on this property that exceeds 25% of that 3,000-square-foot number requires a variance because the use is on the entire property. And that it wasn't one structure versus the other structure. There was no primary house or main house. I could essentially wipe this site out, build two equal-sized 1,500-square-foot houses, maintaining that use and square footage is, is the interpretation I got. Not, it had nothing to do, like it was the two buildings together. Does that make sense? So I was told by the building department, I can't do anything with the main, main house. The entire property, I can only expand with a special exception up to that 25%. So I couldn't even do a primary house and keep the guest house on this lot.
So I'm not sure that I remember speaking about this specific piece of information with the legal counsel. And I did, you know, at some point, was shuffling papers and things like that. And maybe you guys talked about this. But our interpretation is that it is 25% of all of the structures on the property, not necessarily just the second property that would, would cause the non-conforming use, the second single-family home that would cause the non-conforming use.
So remind me, when you did the calculations for the excess of 25% for the variance, was that done on the new square footage of the house and all the use areas plus the new guest house? Like all the new square footage? Was that your calculation? Because that's the increase in use if you're going to start with that basis that it's both buildings.
Right. Right, correct.
So is that the calculation?
In my application, I used the, the two buildings that have finished space. So what I'm calling the guest house and the primary house. And that was my impression, given talking to the building department, that if we wanted to expand anything on this property, it would require a special exception up to 25% or a variance over 25%, which I said, for this property, one of the biggest lots on Sewell Road, the 25% wasn't, it just didn't make sense for us. And so I didn't even go, I, I'm more than 25%. I didn't even calculate it after that because I said, this is, you know...
So my question is, so the living area in the existing house is 2,420? The finished living area?
That's the footprint of the house.
So if we're talking about, if we're talking about non-conformance use and we're talking about the whole property as being the non-conforming use, we'd have to include the second floor of the house, right?
No, because...
I think at the heart of the matter, we were getting rid of the whole non-conforming use because both buildings were being raised, correct? And then it becomes conforming. And that's why you need the variance because it's over the 25% of conforming, correct?
It becomes non-conforming when you build the second building.
But that's why it triggers a different...
So the structures become conforming, right?
Right.
And so, and so remember, we talked about this Section D, which says the basis for determining the maximum cumulative expansion limitation, 25% shall be the existing lawfully non-conforming footprint measured to the overhangs. However, that does have to do only with structures. That's under the structures section, so the area dimensions. There, there is no kind of explanation of that in the use. It says a non-conforming use occupying a portion or parcel of land or portion of building may by special exception be expanded to more than 25% or a variance is required. And at that point, we did talk about the second floors. So the expansion of the second floors would include that, be part of that calculation of the 25%. What we didn't talk about is multiple structures, I think.
All right. The note that I have is if we go beyond the 25% in aggregate for use, it needs a variance.
Yep. And I think the question is, does the aggregate mean both structures or just...
Yeah, I think that's the way I heard it.
Yeah.
That's how I heard it, too.
Both floors of...
Correct.
And so the, the calculations given don't include the second floor of the main house.
He said that didn't matter. He said the floors...
Didn't matter for building.
Didn't matter for the structure piece, which does not apply to them. But it did matter for the use. Because remember, he talked about a business could just expand and expand and expand, going up and up and up, right?
I thought it was 25% of the footprint.
No.
For the building.
That's, that's for the portion of the ordinance that has to do with structures and non-conforming structures.
We're not talking about structure anymore. We're talking about the use.
Well, may I ask a question? So he was really clear about that we, that for legal purposes, we need to be doing, we need to be looking at this under the proper citation. We don't have the ability right now to just switch citations. Could you, what are your concerns about withdrawing? And then it's, it's nothing, I think the heart of the matter remains the same with everything that we've looked at and that you've presented. It becomes kind of a paperwork thing? So what are your concerns about withdrawing and resubmitting with the proper citation?
My concerns are I'm still confused as to what I'm calculating. And a year ago, I met with two different people, got a different interpretation. This year, applied in January, have gotten bumped. And so it is a bit of a time. I mean, he's paying my time, our time, to be here. We'd be resubmitting a renewed application.
I understand.
And I, and I feel like, I understand what you're saying, if it needs to be done. But I feel like the application would be very similar once I understand if I'm calculating...
It will be.
Gross floor area, lot coverage, how many buildings. I, when I met with the building inspector, why he advised me to apply under this section is that he said you're not, how do you expand a use? He said you're expanding a structure that... He said, "You're expanding a structure that has a use associated with it." And so, I just, if I walk away from here, I want to be very clear on what I, what I need to apply for if my client wants to, to proceed with that.
Yeah. I understand you caught us in the worst possible year. You know? I mean, you couldn't have hit us at a, a, a worse time. So, I understand your frustration about the miscommunication and different communications. I think right now, we have to act on what we've been told today with our attorney and our current planning director, uh, who interim, which is very unfortunate, and we apologize for the, the year of, of people in and out and people that gave you misinformation.
Okay. So, having said that, I, I, to go along with your interpretation, if we have the living area of both units as the basis for the expansion of the use, and then we know what 25% is, and then what you're asking for over that, that's the variance piece, so...
So, now, we're talking a gross floor area calculation?
A what?
A gross floor area calculation where I'm calculating heated interior space?
Yeah, the use.
And no longer covered porches and over roof overhangs and, and that, the such?
That would be for your lot coverage, but since you're meeting all your setbacks...
So, the answer is yes.
The answer is yes.
So, the advice from our attorney today was that that section that talks about roof overhangs and uncovered porches has to do with non-conforming structures, not meeting setbacks, which is not what you guys are because you're rebuilding them to meet setbacks. So, the advice we got today was that for the, for the use calculations, it includes all the floors. So, yes, gross floor area. Correct.
Gross floor area including overhangs?
No, that gross floor area is...
Livable space definition.
It has a space, basically. Interior heated space, essentially.
Right.
Typically, it is.
And this is a tough interpretation because it is, it is not clear in the ordinance. And that's why we needed to talk with legal counsel about what the best interpretation is.
Hi, Randy Tatro for the applicant, Norway Plains. Saw the email I sent in response to Shawna's this morning. It's kind of what I thought all along as far as the structures went. Once we put them in a non, uh, in a conforming area, why are we worrying about the expansion? In regards to the use that Shawna brought up originally, I tend to agree that it's a, a use variance for an expansion of certain amount of use. I think the struggle was to try to determine what, how to calculate that use, you know? And as far as the gross floor areas go, I haven't seen it calculated that way, but I kind of understand what you're talking about there. I mean, A2 talks about a portion of a parcel of land or a portion of the building. So, you know, residential use can be determined some different ways. That's why, you know, you're struggling with it. So, if you've got a residential use on a property, and it's non-conforming because you have two structures with living space, how do you define that residential use? Obviously, in this section, it says a portion of a parcel of land or the building. So, we're choosing to go with the building and the interior residential use. That's, that's what you guys are coming up with.
Right. Yep.
Yeah.
The use is the, I would say, the, the conditioned part of the living spaces.
Right. Because as far as...
Or, or if there's a definition in our zoning, which I don't know if there is.
Yeah. Well, they can't use the portion of the parcel because how are we going to kind of determine that? That's going to roughly stay the same anyway as far as residential use. So, I see that there's a problem with how she got directed to put that first section in there. And she asked me about that originally, and that's what she was told to do. So, unfortunately, that's a problem that can't be fixed. But as far as moving forward and being able to compare this the next time, talk about it logically, if that's what you guys are going with, is the interior residential, existing interior residential and existing...
For use only.
For use only, but combined, right?
Not for non, not for non-conforming structures.
So, you take the inside of the, the guest house, you take the inside of the original house, both floors, and you compare it to what's being proposed per the percentage.
Correct.
And if it's over 25%, probably is, because the lot's quite a bit bigger than some of the others, that's what they need to dictate. Because she did write down in what she was proposing, that it was 25% over the use in both sections, including what the, what the building inspector put down. So, she described it the right way. It's just that that one section is two instead of one. Okay. I just wanted to understand it myself. Thank you.
No. Oh.
So, my question is, if we resubmit with the right building code numbers, that, that submitted correctly, are we going to be able to get a vote on whether or not we get the variance or not? Or is there something else that's going to come up?
That, that would happen after the submittal of the new application. We'd go through the five criteria.
I, I do, I have a question.
Well, he's asked a question we're trying to answer.
But, but nothing's really going to change other than the, the ordinance code number.
Well, it may. It may not.
That's up to you guys.
That's up to you.
We'll wait to see what you submit.
However you calculate it, I mean, that would be your decision. It's a, it'll be a new application. Am I correct? It'd be a new application. We have to advertise it again and notify the abutters again.
That's right.
And then the, uh, narrative would be your narrative on the five criteria. I think there would be some changes in that as to how you would approach it, how you couch it. I can't sit here tonight and say, well, you'll get five votes in the affirmative. I have no prediction on that. And I, nor should I.
Go ahead. What was your comment?
I was just going to ask if there's an urgent timeline you're trying to meet.
Before 2030.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, because we have on occasion scheduled public hearings, or, again, every, you know, two weeks afterwards, and I'm wondering...
That's an appropriate question about their, their need for a timeline. We, we'll accommodate that. At, at this juncture, the, the decision is yours to, as we offered, for you to withdraw your application and submit a new one. If you go forward with this, I can't speak for the board, but it would appear to me that it would probably be denied. And I don't think you want that to happen.
But if they were to resubmit, the question is not, can they leave, can they put two buildings on the property? The only question is reviewing the variance request for an increased area in living space.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, my, and that should be a fairly straightforward discussion among us.
And Shawna, are you not available to answer questions as they come up as she, if she...
Absolutely.
As she reworks the application?
Yeah. I am here only two days a week, Tuesday and Thursday, one to five. But yes, I certainly can answer.
And she's not going anywhere for at least three months. So, the answer wouldn't change. Three months, you'd have that continuation.
Are the square footages that we're asking for reasonable?
Well, I was just noticing that in, in the percentage that you're going to calculate, you also have a basement area that's conditioned. So, that would be part of the new, the new amount that ends up being over the 25%, correct? So, you're going to figure out what's there, and then you're going to show what 25% would be, and then you're going to tell us what the square footage over that is for your variance request. Correct?
Yeah. We're going to be well over 25. We're going to come back asking for well over 25%. Because it's just not realistic for this property.
I was, I was just making sure that we understood there were probably three floors of expansion in the main house. Because we kept saying two, but it's actually three.
Oh, yeah. I will calculate gross floor area.
Yeah.
So, it's going to be well over 25%. It could be over 100%. And the question is, is that reasonable? And I think what you just said is that based on the size of the property and so forth, it would appear to be reasonable to you. And I don't know, I don't think we disagree with that. But that's, that's something we would have to discuss. So, it...
This goes back to our conversation with, during the attorney meeting where you brought up the point that the first house can be just as big as it wants to be. It can fill up, you know, as much as the whole lot is appropriate. It's also then taking up percentage for variance of impact.
It's, it's just kicking up the percentage for calculation for the purpose of applying for a variance. As far as permission to build a big house, they can still build a big house.
Which increases their variance request.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
I see heads shaking up and down.
So, we're, we're hung up on the guest house pretty much, right?
What?
Well, no.
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 What, what was that, Jody, what?
It's a non-conforming use. So, the guest house is okay. It's just the total living area of the two houses is a lot bigger than it used to be.
Expansion.
Expansion of, together.
That's all we have to consider.
An aggregate.
All right.
And the reason we have to reconsider it is, like Shawna said, it's, it's a legal point that the, the whole thing has to be based on the correct code, the correct citation in the, in the ordinance. It has to be presented correctly to the abutters, and we have to go through that process with the correct section in the ordinance called out in order to rehear this. Otherwise, we could hear it tonight, but no, we...
Yes. I, I understand that, that number needs to be the right number, and we will, we'll...
Yeah.
Provided we go forward, recalculate that. But what do you want to do?
Absolutely.
No, I'd love to be able to hear it tonight, but we can't.
Would your recommendation, can we withdraw without prejudice?
What was that? I'm sorry.
Could we, we, could we withdraw this application without prejudice?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep. It's, it's either that or the board deliberates, and it sounds to me as if they would deny it on that technicality and have you reapply.
Yes.
Yep. So, yep.
So, a motion?
No, no, we don't make a motion. They...
Oh. Well, don't we accept it?
The ball is in their court.
Okay.
If you would like to withdraw your application, you, you have to reiterate that to us.
I just did. We would like to withdraw this application without prejudice.
Okay.
And while we decide what we're going to do for the next step.
Okay. There's nothing for us to really accept other than to say thank you. And if and when you submit your new application, we had discussed about the fee, we will waive the fee requirements. It's a small token.
Much appreciated. But one last question. Who should we deal with to make sure that...
Right here.
We're submitting it exactly as you all want to see it?
This, this lady right here. Don't deal with the secretaries and don't deal with the staff. Go right to the part-time planner. She has the capabilities to be able to help you along.
And I'm in both days this week if you wanted to meet, sit and meet with me.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. All right. So, let me put this stuff away. They're going to, they're going to, um... They should be changing some of the numbers down here, so... That last one is hard, but the other two weren't. It's up to you. Okay. So, as I think about this, there's no reason to close the public hearing because there isn't, there isn't, it's, it's, it's over.
Right.
So, I'll just...
Start fresh next time.
Yep. So, I'll just start with the, uh, next item on the agenda is Cara Brunetta, and that is a variance for two side yard setbacks. Clerk, would you please read the legal notice?
Cara Brunetta, tax map 200-0205 East Shore Drive, East Shore Road, I'm sorry. Case number 08-V-25. Public hearing for variance under section 175-64A to C. Setback requirements, side yard of the Wolf Run Planning zoning, zoning ordinance, continuation of formal submission and public hearing from April 7, 2025.
Okay. And if the applicant would like to address the board, uh, if you would go through the application with us, first of all?
Yeah. I'm Tom Vining, Vining Engineering. I'm here with Cara Brunetta, owns this property. And Josh Tebow, he's my assistant.
And if you go through the five criteria?
I can, yes. I'd like to, I have a narrative, and I can go through that for us, maybe?
Yeah. Yeah. If you'd like to do it in your own words rather than read from the document, that's okay, too?
Yeah. Cara Brunetta has owned this property since 2011. The building was constructed in 1947 with a deck and a small addition added in 2021. The proposed plan is for an addition on the driveway end of the building for living space and garage space below. The other end of the building is to have a small addition to expand the bedroom. The driveway side addition encroachment in the site building setback is three feet on one end, and the bedroom encroachment on the other end of the building is seven feet. New Hampshire Shore Land and DES wetland permits are pending for stormwater improvements and repair of the erosion of the shoreline and steep banking. Existing septic system was installed in 1993. Stormwater management study has been completed. Proposed lot size coverage is 22.0%. This is on 5 Earl Shore, Shore Road, which is off, what, Wadelin Road, which is off Main Street. I'd like to go over the plan if I could do that. In the packet, I provided a tax map that shows the lot and what the surrounding property is like. I have pictures here that show what it's like. Most of you have been there at the last month meeting. We provided a survey plan that was done in 1980. And then we have conceptual plans of the building. As far as the hardship, what we're asking for is seven-foot encroachment for a proposed addition on one side of the building, three-foot setback encroachment on the other end of the building. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the existing house is improved with additional living space. Spirit of the ordinance is observed because the resident, residential use is maintained. Substantial justice is done because the lot is non-conforming and its suitable side setback is maintained. The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because the value of the house will increase, and visual impact is very minor. house will increase and visual impact is very minor. The special conditions of this property that distinguish it from other properties are as follows. The road runs through the property, including that area for house and septic, and the septic system. Expansion of the existing house to a modern house size is limited to the ends of the building due to the septic system and the road, the way that's constructed, so. This is the existing plan here. Large building is what it is now. The building is 21 feet wide and 50 feet long. It's the only building on the lot. These are the boundaries, the setback lines are here. We're behind the 50-foot setback to the lake. This portion of the building is already in this setback here. The road comes down here and goes this way to a neighboring house over here. This comes to a dead end on this area. This is Earl Shore Road. There's a house, one house there. That house is down in here. Different topography than what we have here. And then this house over here is 200 feet away. So when you were at the sidewalk, the first discussion as a group was, was right in here. We're looking at the end of the building. And to the right is the lake and to the left is the, the hillside with the 1980s septic system. And that's where we want to add on to this house. She's lived there for several years and it's not a large house. And she'd like to have a garage area and more living space and some closets and additional bedroom space here in the back. So the issue with this driveway here is that we're just into the setback, this little tiny red area, three feet wide by 14 feet long. That's the encroachment. So when you're, when you're here to get in the house, you go up steps like this high, four and a half, five feet tall to get into the house. The garage is for one space, so that's 14 foot wide garage area there. That's the blue area. When you get out of the car, you got to walk up into the house. So that's why we're proposing a garage 24 feet long. And that gets us over the setback and that's why we're here. But we need that, that room for a garage there. The other end of the house is to expand a bedroom as much as possible. And it's limited due to the slope, the steep slope there. And it's also within the setback of what's already there. This already encroaches, encroaches on the line and setback line and we're not going any closer to the setback line. When somebody drives into this property, they, they go around and the drive, the car faces this way and it looks right in the back end of this house. Where she has a snow blower, wood splitter or something like that. She'd like to hide that a little bit. Just a comment she made to me, so. I've done stormwater calculations to try to, trying to solve this erosion problem when we started this. So I have, um, uh, underground storage with concrete chambers here to catch the water off the roof on this end of the building. And then here I have a catch basin drywall, catch the water off the eaves here that will infiltrate the runoff into the soil and it won't go over the banking. This is erodible land as it is. And the challenge to this property is that when you come down the driveway, you worry about your brakes a little bit and hope that you end up someplace that you can get out of there. So it's steep and there's no option to put the septic up here to get us, get it out of here. It's a big system. There's no room here or here, so it's there. And the land goes, goes up when you're, when you're there. And on the other end, it goes down like that. So that's why it's a long, long building. So that's, uh, that's what we're asking for. And Kara can answer questions about.
I'm off of Port Weddell, which I'm sure some of you are aware, a lot of runoff from the water coming down. As he mentioned, for the garage there, my lot angles and so in down in the base, coming out from where it is now, I, I want it to be 24 feet so I can have stairs getting down into that area to have another exit. So I would have went, so really when you have the stairs, you're talking what's going to be 21 feet or 20 feet there. And on the back side here, as I said, not going past the building there, it's a camp. I live here permanently now. I mean, I have no closets, no nothing, so it's just trying to expand that area in the back. I know when we were on the site, I think there was a discussion, could you move this down a little bit? I'd already have to move a window. And as he mentioned, we can't go further back because of the embankment. So that's what I'm asking for is for those to be considered.
This one? Yeah. Board members, you got any questions? Go around the table. I guess just one technical question. The septic tank, there's no dimension to it, but from the proposed addition and back over to the tank, but there appears to be technical room to expand that addition in that direction, at least eight feet before running into the, encroaching into the septic tank setback, correct?
Yeah, there's room there.
Okay. What is the room that that window is in that you would have to remove?
There's, it's two rooms there, so where the, it says 16 feet and eight feet. It's actually two technical, so there's windows in both of those rooms. Let me show you on here or?
If you could.
So yeah, it would be this window.
Yeah, but what, what rooms are those in?
It's my office right now.
And this is a separate room?
That's my bedroom.
And that's your office?
Yeah. And that window is actually, there isn't that window.
Okay. Thanks. Chuck, any questions?
So just to clarify, the, I think you just said the expansion of the bedroom is eight feet out and then 16 feet wide?
Long.
Long?
Long, yeah.
Okay. And that's to expand the bedroom? And, and is all of that non-conforming or is it just part of that non-conforming? I think it, what's, what's in red is.
Yeah, red is non-conforming.
Red is non-conforming, which is about a third or 30 or 40% of the additional.
That's right.
Area. And then on the other side, there's just one corner of the garage that would be non-conforming?
Triangle of three by 14 feet.
Three by 14. So if you went back to a regular sized garage, you could be within, but you want a longer garage so you can have a stairway inside the garage.
So right now, the way the property is, is it kind of goes underneath. So if I didn't do a 24, I wouldn't be able to get stairs to go down into that basement area.
And you want stairs.
And I want extra access to get out of the home downstairs.
Right, you want a sheltered means of getting into the house through the, through the garage.
Correct, but really it's so that you can get, get out of the home as well, just God forbid there was a fire or something. Cause if I went all the way to the end, there wouldn't be an access. Right now, um, there's, there's doors to get underneath the, into the basement.
I got a question.
Jody?
Yeah. When, when we went on the sidewalk, there was a, there was a drainage pipe pointing right out at the lake. Is that where this, um, the precast infiltration chambers on the driveway? Is that where that's going to be?
Yeah, that's my.
I, I, maybe, maybe you already said that, but I didn't hear.
No, no, that's, that's correct. I mean, there's definitely a drainage, there's a drainage issue just coming down Port Weddell and, and so yeah, that proposal where the red is would.
So instead of just, like right now, it's just shooting out a pipe and now these chambers are, what's that, what's the size on those chambers?
Well, they're eight by eight.
Is that 12 foot wide by 16 foot long?
Yeah, something like that.
Something like that.
16, yeah, 16, 16 by eight, uh, 12.
Yeah, so I mean, that's going to be better than a covert pipe.
That's correct.
For trying to slow things down a little bit, that's all. That's my, that was my question on that.
Water explodes all, all the time I had to put it.
Yeah. No, I must, it must just, when it pours, it must be a nightmare. That's what Port Weddell is, is a nightmare.
And I'm on a private road, so it's, I'm not even part of that. So I've got to try to figure it out myself.
Okay, that's the only question I have, I think.
Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak for this application? Or anyone that would like to speak opposed? Or anyone that would like to speak in general of their opinion of the application? Okay.
Seeing none. Just so I understand, this is one variance application for both areas or are there actually two separate ones?
So it's one application for both?
For both. The drawings signify both?
I listed, yeah. I listed them separately.
You did?
Yeah. Well, let me check this right here. Yeah. One's a seven foot encroachment and the other one is a three foot encroachment under the same article.
Right, I was just trying to find out if they were split up or if they were together. I guess they're together. Well, I don't know, it's hard to say. They are listed separately. Shanna, I guess, are, is that one, is that two variances with the same argument or is this one variance for both encroachments?
I'm treating it as one variance for the two setbacks. And the drawings I will identify in the motion as to their date and the date of the application so that it will all be in the file. If there's no other comment, I'd like to close the public hearing and deliberate. And we do so by going through the criteria. Where is it? The first one and the second one, we join together because they have a similar effect. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Members, any comment? Chuck?
She's improving the property and it's, it's, I don't see that it conflicts with any ordinance.
It's definitely an improvement to the property.
Yeah, and it doesn't negatively impact neighbors that I can see.
Number three, substantial justice is done because. Well, it's back again to, if you look at the, if you look at the drawings, you will see the improvements that's done. The site is a very difficult site and you'll see the improvements that are done with the drainage and the landscaping and so forth that's going to happen there, so.
Yeah, I'd like to see.
The justices to the improvement of the land.
Yeah, just a, like I said about the drainage, just slowing stuff down a little bit more before it dumps into the lake. I mean, just even a little bit makes a big difference.
Yeah, and it changes the gutters.
Exactly.
So it's, it's an improvement to the site.
So I have, my feeling is a little bit different between each of the variances and I'm not making a decision on number three. I just want to say that I think that the garage addition makes a lot of sense. It's an improvement. It's great for the property. It makes a use sense for her, but I don't feel the same necessarily about the encroachment on the other side, which is up against a neighbor over there. I feel like, I feel like they're different, I guess. So I'm not, um, on number three, no, it says a suitable side setback is maintained. Well, it'd be nice if that piece was not further encroaching over the line because there's no, I'm not seeing really any benefit to the property for that as I see a benefit to the property for the garage side encroachment of, you know, that little slice makes sense to me.
Doesn't, doesn't this, am I reading this wrong? Doesn't this new little small addition line up directly?
It does line up.
With where the house is?
It does. The house is already encroaching. Here's the property line right here.
Oh, wait, I thought the property line was right here.
I mean, here's the setback line.
Oh.
That's the, the red part is the encroachment on that side.
So I guess I wasn't clear. Which, which encroachment do you think kind of bothered, would, might bother a neighbor?
The, not the garage side, but the other side. I think that has.
She wants to, she wants to expand the bedroom.
Correct.
Up toward, towards her leach field, I guess.
Yes.
So I wasn't able to go on the walkthrough. How close is the other house, the problem, on the other property? How close is the other house?
No, you don't, you don't see it.
You don't see it?
Yes, you do.
Well, they're kind of down in a hollow.
So they're not really like right, even though it still is over the line, it's still not like right on top of the other house, right? The neighbor's house?
It's not on top of them.
Okay.
It's not really sticking out any further than, let's talk to the, it's next to it, right?
So it, it might be more visible, but then she's not expanding in the direction of her neighbor, right?
Yeah, it is in the direction of the neighbor. It's a direction of the property line.
The uphill neighbor.
The what?
The uphill neighbor.
Oh, no, not the uphill, the, the side neighbor.
The side neighbor.
Well, let's, let's go to number four. The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because, and it kind of goes to what you're talking about now, that this, this, it, this property, the way the house is situated on that piece of land, that it really is not that visible. It's down in the hollow. It's down, down a steep driveway and kind of out of, out of sight. But as I say, I think the overall plan is a far improvement of doing nothing. Chuck?
No, I, I agree. And I don't see, the bedroom expansion is going uphill away from the lake, right?
The red part is growing into the sideline setback, which is adjacent to the house on the other side of the property line.
It's still flush with the, the rest of the house as it is.
It is flush with the non-conforming part of the house, yes.
So I guess my point is they're not getting any closer to the neigh, that neighbor's house.
Just more of it.
It's.
More of it.
That end of the house is a little bit wider, but it's, doesn't encroach any further towards the neighbor's house.
Than the existing non-conforming block?
Right.
No, correct.
Okay, number five. Little enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in an unnecessary hardship due to the special conditions of this property that distinguish it from other properties in the area as follows. I think if we've ever had one that had special conditions to the land, this one is one of them. The, uh, the driveways that go down, the, the locations of the house and the septic and they're constrained as to what they can do and therefore they have come forward to us for a variance. It's an improvement of the house in general and it's an improve, in the building and it's an improvement of the site. And I think it's very important that the site is improved because of the way the land sits in, in proximity to the drainage to the lake and they are trying to improve that. So I think that number five, while it's a hard one to meet, I think this one meets it.
I would agree.
I agree as well. There are a number of constraints that. There are a number of constraints that, that make it difficult to do anything else other than what they're doing.
So I think the, the hardship on the lot does lead the proposed garage addition to be how it's designed, given the differences in levels and the need for accessing the various parts of the house, and honestly, there's only a very small part there that's actually encroaching. I don't feel the same way about the back. I don't think there's any physical reason why that bump out can't be either completely within the setbacks or very slightly over the setback. And that's why I asked if this was two variances, because unfortunately, I can't, I can't dislike this one and like that one, and, I mean, my vote's gotta be one way or the other for both of them. But I don't feel like there's a hardship on that back bump out. I think it could be moved over with the same, you know, increase in living space without the variance.
I could agree with, you know, from looking from the outside of the house, I, I could agree with you, but I, we didn't see the inside of that house, and I think, you know, she's just trying to work with the configuration of rooms within her house, and I think it would make more sense, it makes more sense to her because it, you know...
I'm sure it does.
So doing what you're suggesting wouldn't really make the inside of the house functional.
Well, I was talking to the constraints of the property, the special, the special, the special uniqueness of the property when I'm talking about moving that over. I don't think there's any special uniqueness in the property that would prevent, prevent that from not being over the line and encroaching.
But we can't redesign.
I'm not redesigning.
Okay.
I'm explaining that it's unfortunate that these are one variance, because I can't vote one way on one and one, and a different way on the other.
But I think I...
That's not saying that I've decided how I'm gonna vote, I'm just saying it's unfortunate.
But, but for me, the fact that the abutter on that side did not come and speak up against the addition on that side also says something about, um, how much, if it would bother them, they would be here, I would think.
Well, what do we, we're talking, what?
The small addition.
Eight by 16, is that right?
Yeah.
Eight feet, yes.
Well, the encroachment is about eight by eight.
Yeah.
Hmm, eight by five.
I would be concerned if it was a bigger...
A half.
Encroaching and, you know, but, that's my thought.
Okay, I believe I closed the public hearing for the deliberations, and so therefore I am prepared, and we went through the five criteria, I'm prepared to make a motion to a...
Did we ask if there, anybody's here to speak?
I did that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you, sorry.
Okay. I make a motion to approve, um, the application dated March 13th, 2025, per the plan of February 24th, 2025, for a variance to build two additions to the existing property, um, per, where's the legal notice? Per, a variance per 175-64A to C setbacks, side yards. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote. Those in favor, Chuck?
Aye.
Ryan, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
No?
Okay, that's, uh, four to one. The variance passes, you have your variance, now you can proceed for building permit. Oh, and I have to say the conditions that are boilerplate that go with it. Um, let's see. Uh, all federal and state permits shall be received prior to the construction, including but not limited to the town of Wolfboro building permit. The approval is for all the documents submitted as dated March 13th, 2025 and February 24th, 2025. Um, uh, the application as submitted to the ZBA does not satisfy the submitted requirements for the building permit or a site plan approval. The notice of decision shall be recorded at the Carroll County Registry of Deeds, and the applicant shall be responsible for the payment of all recording fees. The variance shall be, um, that, valid if exercised within two years from the date of approval or as further extended by local ordinance or by the zoning board of adjustments for good cause in accordance with 674-331A. Appeal process pursuant to RSA 677-2, any aggrieved party may appeal this decision to the county superior court within 30 days or do, or the date of the board voted to approve or dis, approve this, approve this application and/or in some instances, the housing appeals board under 677-4 and 677-15 and 679-6. So you have your approval. And, thank you. All right, now let me put this away. Uh, what did I do with the agenda? Uh, where's my agenda? Oh, here it is. Okay, that away. Okay, so, the third case on the agenda is, um, Brian Arsenault, uh, and it also is for a variance for a setback in the front yard. And Mr. Clerk, would you please read the legal notice?
Brian Arsenault, tax map 234-01152, Redbrook Circle, case number 09-V-25, public hearing for a variance under section 175-85A1. Setback requirements, front yard slash street of the Wolfboro Planning and the Zoning Ordinance, continuation of formal submission and public hearing from April 7th, 2025.
Good evening, and thank you for taking the time out of your day to volunteer for the benefit of your community.
And could you state your name for the record?
Oh, this is Brian Arsenault. I just want to thank you. Your service is recognized because I, too, have dedicated to land use regulation and enforcement as a New Hampshire building inspector. So I've sat through a few of these in my career. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to read a narrative. And basically, the house in 1968 was constructed by a 30-year occupant within the side yard setback along the top of the plot plan, which we corrected with an equitable waiver of dimensional requirements by the ZBA in 2002. Also shown on the plot plan was the original constructed house, encroached approximately three feet into the front yard, as you can see there. The house was constructed on a corner lot with one door that overlooks the opposite side of the gravel road. The door is over here, which wraps around the house. It is not in either side of the road front, very unique and not too accommodating. Typically, there's a door at the side of the driveway, as in most houses. All my abutters have a door right aside of their driveway, which is the reason for this variance in installing a door in a farmer's porch. Examples have been in your packet, added to your packet. Based on Article 6, 175.43I, any proposed construction activity located within the setback area with further encroachment shall require a variance. Relief is being requested from Article 8, GR 175-85A, setback requirements in the front yard. 30 feet is required in the current zoning ordinance, whereas 11.2 is being requested. The thought is to continue what was the original non-modified 10-foot setback around the exposed corner lot, which was the allowed setback when the home was constructed, up to the change that occurred in the zoning ordinance in 2009. The highlighted in red on the submitted plan. The original owner of the home was the builder and occupant, and we have been the second owner for 25 years. Basically, my wife and I would like to correct the error to welcome deliveries and guests and gain egress, an egress door opposite of the original door from 1968. So this is the original door, we would like another door here. And that closes my narrative.
I have no idea.
Would you like me to read the variance application into the rec, uh, into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay. One, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest because, for variance to be contrary to the ordinance, it would need to violate the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. It would need to affect the character of the neighborhood or threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. The project will enhance the use and value of the property and will not adversely change the character of the neighborhood. The existing encroachment has been in existence for over 55 years. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the house is uniquely situated on the property. It appears to be constructed backwards with the door on the opposite side, and there is no door on the driveway side of the house. This proposal does not conflict with the spirit of the ordinance. Number three, substantial justice is done because the house has been resided for 25-plus years, and it's difficult to function without a door for deliveries, guests, and overall appearance. The general public would not see any gain in denying this variance because it would not, because it would match other properties in the area. Number four, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished because the modifications are, with the character of the property and the neighborhood, the abutters notified for this variance all have a door aside of their driveway in a front porch to greet. There is no evidence that this proposal would negatively impact on the property values in the area. Number five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because special conditions of the properties that distinguish it from other properties in the area as follows. The special conditions is this home was one of the original homes, the second or third constructed in this new 24-lot subdivision in approximately 1966. The quality of the construction was lacked, along with oversight, resulting in encroachments in the setback in two of the four property lines, along with the house that was not constructed level, which was, it was non-conforming before the certificate of occupancy, if it was ever issued, was issued. Use A, owning to the special, special conditions of the property set forth above that distinguishes it from the other properties in the area. I, no fear and substantial relationship exists between the purposes of the ordinance applicable to the application and the specific application of the provision to the property because this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Literal enforcement of the ordinance would prevent access to the occup, to the occupants by continuing to restrict access to inside the home. The most direct means of access from the driveway would continue, and that would be a hardship. Two, the proposed use is a reasonable one because the door will provide safety as we get older and reasonable enjoyment of the property to the visitors.
Oops, sorry.
B, owning, or, if the criteria in paragraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if, B, owning to the special conditions set forth above the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it because, without a variance, there is no feasible access that will allow the owner's access to the existing home and not interfere with the current layout. That closes that portion, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, um, board members, um, anybody like to take a stab at this? Jody?
Questions?
Questions?
How many, uh, entry doors, ways into the, into the home now?
Currently, there is one here, as, as mentioned, here.
Well, I can't, I can't see what you're pointing for.
Right here.
Right.
That's where it was constructed.
Okay, on the back deck, the back deck's there.
Yes. Now, there is a garage door here.
Yeah.
And under the building code, which I, I have a copy of, you need an access door, just in case your garage door doesn't open for egress purposes. So we do have a door here, but it's not...
Where is, where is that, that you're pointing?
The door is right here.
On the corner?
Yes, on the corner. On the corner to the, all right, let me look at a picture here. Here is the home, here is the garage, the door's right on the side, but the door is to facilitate exiting the garage, because most house fires occur in a garage, and the garage door won't open, and we're able to get out.
Is it where the ramp is?
Yes.
Yeah, on the side.
Yes, that transitions to get in there.
Into the, but there's no, is there no door from the garage into the house?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Midway in the back, and that's in the kitchen area. So I do have a door to leave the living space, cut through the garage, which isn't too welcoming to bring guests through, because my garage is like everybody else's. You have to, there's no room to get around the car, and it's got a lot of stuff.
So there's two, there's two accesses, accesses in right now.
So, I'm glad, great question. So if you look at the zoning law that just changed in January, um, this is the 2018 code. In January of this year, changed to the 2021 code, but it references the same, they didn't change this article. Means of egress. Egress travel from all portions of the dwelling to the required egress door without requiring travel through the garage. Now, to this day, you can still build a home with one door. Egress door, not less than one egress door shall be provided for each dwelling unit. So if you're in the bedroom, how are you gonna get out? Well, then, if you look at your, what's written in your building code, and everybody follows, the size of the window has to be 5.7 square feet. That allows the fireman with his backpack to get in. Not necessarily for the occupant to get out, because on the second floor, there would be a lot of problems. So, to this day, you can just, you only need to build one door to a home. If this home was built correctly, and there was one door on the street side, it would prevent all our guests from walking around and parking their car and me entering around the house to get in, or me showing them everything that's in my garage.
So, that you focused on an additional front door, a front door to greet your guests?
Yes.
But now, my question is, you could actually, without extending the house any further, you could add a front door to the existing structure, could you not?
No, because that would impact the bedrooms. What I want to do here is, this is an example, okay? I'm asking for 16 feet. The porch, based upon this plan, is roughly 10 feet, and behind that door would be roughly six feet. So each one of those bedrooms, if I remove the windows, would access the hallway room to then get out through the front door.
So bedrooms, bedrooms go all the way across the front of the house?
Right here, three bedrooms.
Okay, and, and that additional six foot of house would be a hallway?
Hallway room, yes.
So, so you're adding, so you're knocking the front wall off of your house?
No, we're, we're keeping the front wall.
And the farmer's porch.
No, but he just said the, the rooms get bigger, too, didn't he? I mean, and I was confused, because it said 16 feet on one place on the plans, but then it said 10 feet on the plans.
Correct. In this, this plan, I, I, I heard this, before, this plan shows roughly, this is a farmer's porch that has 10 feet in depth.
Okay.
I'm asking for 16. Where's the other six feet?
Right, that's, where's the other six feet?
Six feet is behind this wall where this door is.
Okay.
There'll be a hallway. There'll be a room, there'll be a... There'll be, and now, these windows that are here for the three bedrooms will be removed, and you'll be able to access it. No promises at this time, but this center bedroom most likely will be eliminated, and it will gain me direct access into my living room, kitchen, and everything else. Currently, our two children come up, and we're going to keep it as a bedroom for now.
Keep it as a bedroom. So how, if you added six feet to the house like you proposed?
16.
Six feet for the house, 10 feet for the porch. So, um, you're adding a hallway, but you said there's bedrooms there. How do you get, if you don't eliminate that second bedroom, how do you get from that hallway to the rest of your house?
Removing these windows.
Right.
Within that newly created space.
Right.
And installing doors.
So you have to go through a bedroom to get to the living space in the back of the house?
You would have to go through the bedrooms to get into this new space to get out the front door.
Right.
Okay. But now, this middle bedroom is quite small, and hopes are that that would become a hallway.
Eventually, you would make that a hallway, yes.
Hallway. So now, you open the front door, and you're able to walk right into the living room. Living room, kitchen area of the home.
So bottom line is, you're coming out 16 feet?
Correct.
Okay.
And that typically is what, and I'm coming out 16 feet, and what's the magic number? Because I already encroached three feet into the setback? So what is the right amount to come out? So we thought 16 feet would be good and still give us the 10-foot setback, which was the original setback when the house was built, right up to 2009 when it got changed. That's why you have a red highlighted thing and a notation over here.
So I'm wondering, all right, the road in front of your house, the kind of a private dirt road?
The corner road.
How, I didn't have a chance to drive down that road and see how many other neighbors you have down there. How many other, how many people basically pass the front of your house?
This is a cul-de-sac of about 22 homes, 24 homes.
Okay. So 20, about 22 families use that road right in front of your house?
Correct. And all my abutters, they're not here tonight. They don't oppose my project. They didn't, and I, I just, as you can see, typically, the layout of a road, let's say a paved road, a paved road is only paved, and people think they own right up to the pavement. They don't. They own, own up to the layout of the road. And as you can see on this, the pay, the, the edge of the road is here, so the setback would actually be 22.2 feet from, if you drive your car, because it's roughly 11 feet from my property line, and I'm asking for another 11 feet there. And of course, the house was built at an angle, and if you pass my house up here, it's actually larger by five feet. So the distance up here would be 16 and a half at 11.2. I'd be 27.8 from the roadway.
At its narrowest point, though, what's your setback going to be?
To the property line is 11.2. To the roadway, it's 11. Collectively, it's 22.2.
Right there. Oh, I see. He's got the, he's adding.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, ladies. Ladies.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to under.
I was pointing out where she was asking on the plan.
Sorry, trying to understand the 22 versus the 11.
So, um, once again, it makes the house, you know, the, the farmer's porch is a nice addition to the house and all, and then an extra six feet for the hallway, but in reality, the egress issue that you've, you're focused on could be addressed by just eliminating that second bedroom right now and putting a front door right there. And then that would give you access to your house.
Are you asking me, could I do that? Could I remove that window and put a door in?
Yes.
Okay. Two issues with that. It's not up to the board to ask for the variance or modify it, but I'm welcome, you're welcome. I'll, I'll answer the question. It's not feasible because I already encroached three feet in the front yard setback.
I'm only pointing out that you don't need a variance to put a front door in the house.
I would, because it's nonconforming. It's already three feet into the setback.
So the door would be in the nonconforming area?
The platform, stairs, all of that would be within the setback.
You would still need a variance.
Yes, I would still be, so that's why I said, I'm three feet into it. No matter what I do, I need a variance.
So why not ask for what you really want?
Which is, I'm here today, and that's why my application says 12 feet.
Understood.
And I understand the Fisher Dover Act 2. Are you guys familiar with Fisher versus Dover?
No, please, go, go ahead.
Okay. What happens is, if an applicant comes before the board, and the board decides not to grant, to deny the application, the applicant cannot return to that board with the same application when new members are elected.
Yeah, we understand that.
Okay. So that's the Fisher versus Dover approach.
Okay.
So I have 16 feet here, and hopefully, I can get it granted. And what's the magic number? I don't know because I'm already three feet into the.
Okay.
So basically, what you say, he's asking for, for what he wants.
What, well.
Yeah, in the variance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where he has the bedroom or where his hallway is, I think, is irrelevant to some degree. He's asked for a farmer's porch that infringes on the setback, and I think that's where we need to, to stay. He's based a lot of his criteria on the fact of where the door is and where the access is and the safety of that. And I think that's what we need to concentrate on.
But he's asked for more than a farmer's porch. He's asked for the farmer's porch plus six feet.
Plus an addition.
Six foot addition.
Plus the what? An addition. Plus six feet.
Yeah.
Because he's basically adding six feet to his house to create an addition, a walk, a hallway.
Hallway.
So it's, you're saying the six feet is not just the farmer's porch?
No. It's six feet plus 10 feet.
Oh.
10 feet for a porch, 60 feet for a hallway.
So he's doing, that's, that measurement there, 16?
Yeah.
Six of it's going to be.
Some of it's going to be the hallway.
With a hallway.
Okay.
And then he's going to, the rest is going to be.
Okay, so like, we could have a dotted line there.
Right.
A dotted line.
I'm curious, I don't know if we're allowed to do this, but since Sean is here, and we don't, we didn't get a planner's report on this, I don't believe.
Correct.
If, if we have the benefit of your expertise and thoughts, if we could have that. Is that okay to ask Suzanne?
So I always try not to give a recommendation to the ZBA because you guys are quasi-judicial. So you need to make the decision on your own and, and look at the criteria on your own. I can certainly help with policy and procedure as we move forward, and then if you had legal interpretation questions, as you did at the last meeting, it's appropriate to continue and ask for legal counsel.
But doesn't a planner normally give, like, before every, every application?
No, that's another, that's for another time, okay? Let's just deal with this application and see if we can either approve it or deny it. Okay, so.
Excuse me, chairperson?
Let, let's, let's.
And also, the architectural plans is nothing under the zoning board of purview.
Right, we understand.
Okay, so, okay, I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, well, let's just, let's just stick with the 16 feet that he's asking to expand. That's in the setback.
Right.
How he divvies that up, I don't think is really our concern.
No, my, my only concern, my, the point I was trying to make was I mistakenly thought that if you just added a front door to the, into the second bedroom, that you'd be in conformance, but that's not correct. You're in, you're still out of conformance, and you need stairs to access it. So if you're nonconforming, then you might as well ask for what would serve you best.
This is the setback line, and that's where the door would be, and, and as Audrey Klein mentioned, it's still in the setback.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions from the public? Either those in favor, or those opposed, or any comments whatsoever? Nope. Then I will close the public hearing. I'll take a vote to close the public hearing. Roll call.
Yes, close the public hearing.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay. And so now, we're going to deliberations on the five criteria. And we'll combine one and two. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest, and the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Anybody want to start off with that one?
Well, I might be going out on a limb here, but, you know, I do think it is contrary only because you're, and it is, it is a strange setback. I mean, it is, I'm not setback, it's a strange configuration. I totally get the need for what he needs. However, you're coming, you're 11 feet from the property line, and I just feel like that's really tight. And I didn't get to see the houses at the end of the, around the circle, but I did see the houses below him, and they were more pulled back from the road. So my, I do think it's.
So what you're suggesting is you think 16 feet is too much?
I'm, I'm saying 11 feet is too, is not enough.
Too close. Yeah, too close.
Changes the nature of the.
And what you're saying is, the alternative is to not make it 16 feet, to maybe make it 10 feet.
Well, I don't think she's saying an alternative.
We can only say what.
Well, I understand that, but your rationale is, if it wasn't such a big farmer's porch, he wouldn't be as close to the road.
Correct.
And you are concerned with the closeness to the road.
I'm concerned about how close he is to the road.
It is close, but I will tell you what, the site visit, I don't know, maybe somebody else that was at the site visit could weigh in. It's kind of out there nowhere. It's kind of, it's kind of rural out there.
It is.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I asked how many people drive by his house, but 22, so.
Well, but that, you don't know, they all go that way. They go around.
I think they have to go that way.
No.
No, he just said it was a cul-de-sac.
It's a cul-de-sac. But they don't have to go that way.
He's on a corner, which again, makes this strange because he's got two 30-foot setbacks now, but there's two roads. It's like a, um.
They don't have to go right in front of his house. They either have to go here or here.
Probably about half of the homes are going to take a right before they go in front of his house, and then.
The other half.
The other half are going to go around and down, so.
Okay.
So I agree with Suzanne, that it, it does look, you know, the numbers look small, but it does look like there's a fair amount of space there.
Yeah.
Just because of the layout is strange.
The number looks scary, but the, when you're physically at the site, it didn't seem that bad.
Right.
Well, because this is a really old development, and these lots are smaller, way smaller than, you know, today's requirements, all the houses, I'm sure, don't meet current setbacks. They met the setbacks at the time. So it seemed, it's a lot closer than you would think of, like, if you drive on some of the other developments. These, these lots are much smaller.
And it was mentioned that at one time, the setback was 10 feet, which it would meet.
Not long ago. Well, I guess it is long ago.
I don't know when, but it's some.
It's not long to me.
All right, Jody, you want to weigh in on that?
On what the?
What we're just talking about. Okay. So let's, um, go on to number three. Substantial justice is done because.
We're allowing the house to be built in a more livable fashion, and he's looking for livability.
Yeah, I mean, it really is true, because I was here on my own. I could not figure out how you got in your house. I mean, I had to, that is very true.
So I'm, I'm, you know, assuming that the back is really the front, and for 25 years, they've been using this deck entrance because that's the only other door.
Which is really inconvenient.
Or, or they've been coming up through the garage.
Well, it's a, it's a peculiar, it's a peculiar situation for sure. And typically, we're not supposed to, um.
And we're not.
Value, or put a lot of weight into aesthetics, but the, the front on Red Book Road circles, the, the front, well, I don't know what you call a front. It really is totally unattractive.
Yeah, I think it will be aesthetically more pleasing to have a porch there.
But that's not one of the criteria.
No.
Oh, okay.
But I can't help but mention it.
Okay.
The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because, well, I think it kind of covered it with what I just said. It's not diminishing the value. It certainly improves the neighborhood with the appearance of the farmer's porch. And the, it's a very unusable setup, the way the doors are, but, the way the whole house is. Chuck, anything on, anything you'd like to share with us on?
On number four?
Yeah.
No, I agree with what you just said.
Okay. Jody, anything?
No.
Okay, number five. Literal, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary The special conditions, the special conditions are not the building itself, the special conditions are the way the building sits on the lot. It's, it's very cockeyed. I can't, I can't think of a different way to describe it. It's not parallel to either road. So I consider that a special condition. Anybody? No?
Like before, I think that there are certain constraints that make it difficult to do what he wants to do, which is just add a formal front door to his, a front entrance to his property, into his house.
Yes.
I think, yeah, I mean, probably this is the only house that doesn't have a door that faces a street, whether it's this street or that street. Most lots only have one street, and they probably all have front doors. I would guess.
Yeah, that's true. I didn't think of that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think this is probably the only one without a front door on one of these two streets.
And the whole neighborhood. I, I think all those places were probably built as, like, summer cottages a long time ago, and now.
Some of them.
Some of them, and now they're just done additions and.
There's no way to answer why it was built that way. So, um.
Well.
That's a special condition.
As the proposed use is a reasonable one because, and as the applicant has pointed out in his opinion, it's a safety issue as to how they egress, enter and egress the house.
So I, I don't, I mean, even though that's the special condition, I don't believe the special condition rises to the level of the construction that's being proposed. I don't know how else to say it.
Well, it's certainly distinguished from other properties in the neighborhood.
Because it doesn't have a front door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you think this is excessive architecture to solve a problem of a proper front door?
What did you say, Chuck? Say that again.
So we're saying that it's excessive architecture to address the problem of a front door?
I, I guess I don't want to use the word "architecture." I think the proposal isn't, um, the need, the need for the, the special condition that causes the need for a front door is. the need for a front door is out of proportion with what's been proposed.
In terms of like square footage?
The solution to that is out of proportion to the special condition.
In terms maybe of square footage perhaps?
Encroachment.
Yeah, yes, certainly.
I sort of see a safety, a safety issue with not having that front door if there makes any sense towards, you know, I'm willing to overlook. You know what I'm getting at? You know what I'm sort of saying is like, you know, I'd feel bad denying it just because it's giving them another access to get out of the house in case there's a fire or something. I just, you know, I'm just...
So to that end, the building code only requires one primary egress. The rest of the accesses are the windows. And that's pretty typical.
That's true.
That's very typical. The setup with one door, a door going through the garage and out is, you know, 90% of houses, probably.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's...
So I think this, that the proposal is, is gaining a lot more than the need because of the special condition. It's like, it meets the special condition and then there's a lot of extra.
So what you're, what I'm interpreting, what you're saying is, is an alternative to this. He could put the front door in with steps.
I'm not gonna say that.
Well, you can't, we can't say that.
Well, I'm, I'm reading that.
Okay, well, I...
That you're saying that he doesn't need the farmer's porch to...
No, I'm saying the, and the encroachment is, is not consistent with the need for the variance.
You want to put a percent on that?
Nope.
So that's your, that's your opinion?
Yes.
Okay. I think that the applicant has made a case that to use the side door and a ramp is not the safest way to go. And he's arguing that a front entrance through a farmer's porch is the way to go. So it will be a board decision. Now remember, if one of the five criteria doesn't suit you, you have to say no. So I'm gonna make a motion.
I make, no, go ahead.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the variance for Brian Arsenal Tax Map 234011, 52 Red Brook Circle, Case 09V25, variance under 17585A1, setback front yard for the farmer's porch with a door entrance as per the application of March 13th, 2025 and per the plan submitted February 27th, 2025. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Call the roll call vote. Chuck?
I vote yes.
Ryan, yes?
Yes.
No.
No.
Okay, it's three to two with conditions. The federal and state permits shall be received prior to construction, including but not limited to the town of Wolf Row building application. The approval is per all documents as submitted as I reiterated March 3rd, 2025 and February 27th, 2025. The application as submitted to the ZBA does not satisfy all the submittal requirements for a building permit or a site plan approval. The notice of decision shall be recorded at the Carroll County Registry of Deeds and the application shall be, applicant shall be responsible for payment for all recording fees. The variance shall be valid if exercised within two years from the date of approval or as further extended by local ordinance or the zoning board of adjustments for good cause in accordance with RSA 674331A. Appeal process pursuant to RSA 6772, an aggrieved party may appeal this decision to the county superior court within 30 days of the date the board voted to approve or and/or in some instances to the housing appeals board appeal under 6774, 67715, and 67796. You have your approval.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Okay. Let me gather up this stuff.
Some things do, some things don't.
I want that, I want this. Okay, so the next item is, the last item of the evening, and this is the first time we've had this hearing on this. It's a new application and it's Alton Rawlings Ford for, where's my, for 125 Lerner Street and looking for an appeal of administrative decision of the codes officer. That's a little bit different from what we usually get. So Mr. Clerk, would you please read the legal notice? Thank you.
I'd like to ask some administrative things either before that or after...
What?
I'd like to ask some administrative questions before we get into the discussion. But if you want to read the case first, I guess?
This is a public hearing for Alton Rawlings Ford LLC, tax map number 218-112, 125 Lerner Street, case number 07-AAD-25. Public hearing for an appeal of administrative decision under Article 175, Section 43(c). Nonconforming structures, formal submission, public hearing, site visit at 5:30 PM. There were four board members present at this site visit. Audrey, Sabach, Jody, and myself. And Chris Dushay.
Chris Drescher.
Okay, just a minute, please.
Can I?
Yeah, just let me...
I was correcting the name for, for who was present.
Well, no, I...
He just wanted to clarify his name. His name is Chris Drescher, is that correct?
Okay.
And Robert Flannery, the owner, were present at the site visit.
I just wanted to, for the board's edification is to explain just a little overview, which you probably would do anyway, as to an administrative appeal. The zoning board of adjustments shall have the power to hear and decide appeals if it is alleged there is an error in any order requirement, decision, or determination made by an administrative official in enforcement of any zoning ordinance adopted under 67416. And in exercising its powers under paragraph one, the zoning board of adjustments may reverse, affirm wholly or in part, or may modify the order requirement, decision, or determination appealed from and may make such order or decision as ought to be made and to that end, shall have the powers of the administrative official from whom the appeal is taken. And I could go on and read more, but the board must apply the strictest letter of the law in exactly the same way as the building inspector must. It cannot alter the substance and map or waive any restrictions under the guise of interpreting the law. So in general, that, that's what I wanted to say. Okay. So now Audrey, you had an administrative question.
Yeah, I have, I just trying to figure out the timeline of this. So Jason wrote a, a decision on Jan, on December 20th that this building had been abandoned And then the application was for an appeal. The application for appeal was turned in January 16th, so it was within the 30-day period. What is page four? On page four, then the decision from the codes officer is dated 225, and I'm not sure how that relates to what we're doing. And then on page four of the application...
Okay, so that's one question. What's this, and it seems like you've got a second question.
And then on page four of the application, it says renovate pre-existing three dwelling unit building. It says renovate, it doesn't say appeal of the decision. The rest of the application is an appeal, but on page four, number M. Where's page three? Well, one of my questions is, we're supposed to hear an appeal within 40, or hear or schedule an appeal within 45 days. Obviously, this is way beyond that. And what was the circumstances? And are we, what is the, do we need, do we need to do something about that?
So the original application was submitted in January and the applicant was asked at that point to submit a little bit of additional information regarding maps and floor plans.
For a, for an appeal?
For the administrative appeal.
Okay.
Correct, yep. We then had significant staff turnover and this application got put to the side and was not scheduled. And that was completely on us. And so the applicant reached out to us and said, hey, what the heck zoning agenda are we on? And we had to scramble a little bit to find that application and get him on the next available agenda. So the application was submitted timely?
Right, I get that. My question is, are we, do we have an obligation beyond listening, hearing it now because it's, you know, well beyond the 45 days? Are we allowed to let it go without, without their consent, I guess, is the question? Beyond the 45 days?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to...
Sue, do you know the answer to that?
I might, but I don't think I want to say it because I have another issue. So hold that thought.
Yeah, let me see if all those issues are done for me.
The application, the application...
Yep.
On page three. And there's two page threes. We use one application that's for a variance and we use the other application that is for RSA 67441. That's lots with no frontage. But that's minor. What my concern is, and it's actually, I guess, the second page of the application.
Which, which starts with what?
The, the, second page. I have, this says fact supporting at the top, where it's got this, it looks like this.
Okay, I have, this is page three.
So the first page should really just say page one. And it says page three.
All right, so while you're trying to figure that out.
I know, so should it say page one?
I have no idea.
It's, it's, it is that one. It is page three.
Page three.
You can't go by the page numbers because it's the wrong forms.
Okay.
All right, so under number 2E, zoning district.
Yep.
All right, it says Village Back Bay. And in fact, Lerner Street, Lerner Street is C1CBD.
Right.
And it's different criteria. Here's the map. The orange, right here, Lerner Street. Lerner Street.
Well, the, the Village Back Bay IMP is not a zoning designation. That's probably from the tax card because we have a village residential.
Yeah, but that's not what our zoning map, our official zoning map says.
I know, there is, isn't one.
And the criteria for C1CBD is 17588, 7, and 89. So let's talk about that before we get the public hearing open.
So they're asking for a variance to the abandonment clause?
Not a variance.
Sorry, an administrative appeal to the abandonment clause under 145, 17543. Not necessarily to any of the criteria that relate to the zoning district?
So is the abandonment, abandonment clause different depending upon the zoning district?
No.
So then does it really matter that this is incorrect on the application? Because we're only dealing with abandonment.
Well, the zoning districts have different requirements or allowances.
Right.
They're based in their decision on what they can or cannot have.
No, not for abandonment. It's the same, and that's, that's for all districts. It's in the general section.
But it's number of units.
No, we're not, no, we're not, we're not looking at number of units.
But they're making their argument...
They're making their argument that the three units weren't abandoned.
Yeah, let me look up the, so in the, in the commercial district...
Multi-units permitted.
It is, multi is permitted with the six units per acre requirement that building inspector noted in the December letter.
Yeah, he had it right. But the application doesn't. The building inspector cited the right, the right, he says, commercial central business district, 17589A.
Well, no.
But they're not citing that.
He's, he's citing the section for the multifamily district, which is not...
Relevant.
Well, but in his, in his letter, he cites 17543c. And that was written in Jan, in December 20. And that was the administrative decision.
So, so basically what, what happened was a building permit got submitted and the applicant said, we're grandfathered nonconforming to that density of multifamily with the six acres. And the building inspector said, no, you're not. You're abandoned per 17543c. And the applicant is fighting the abandonment aspect of it, which the criteria don't necessarily apply to then.
Well, I kind of think it does because if we say it's not abandoned, then I think we need to know what district it falls under.
We could make it a condition of approval either way that we vote, that the applicant amend the application for the record to put the correct zoning district on the paperwork within the record.
Okay.
Right.
All right, yep.
Okay. I don't really quite know what this notice of decision on 225 was that talks about convert to multifamily dwelling with a different section.
I'm not either, to be honest with you.
Yeah. I mean, what I think happened was that they recognized, or maybe he recognized that this was old and he needed to give a, one that was more current based on the application submitted. So he wrote this one.
Is this Jason's signature?
Yeah.
Where does, where are y'all finding that Jason said this was abandoned?
The first page.
No, in his, in his letter. Where in the letter?
And then in the letter.
I'm looking at the letter.
17543c.
Correct.
Would have been...
He says, he says discontinued.
Okay, I was looking for the word abandoned.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, got it. So, so there are... So, so they're applying for an appeal of administrative decision that it's not abandoned based on our zoning language. And so, I guess that's what we're looking at. Then whatever issues come up based on that decision is something we don't need to look at yet.
Right. Okay. Okay. So, whether I did or I didn't, I'm going to make sure I do. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I would ask you to please present your arguments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And of course, we'll correct any procedural things in the application if need be subsequent to today, if that is required. Greetings, the Honorable Board. My name is Chris Gresher. I'm counsel for Robert Flannery, who's sitting behind me. Next to him is his contractor, who had several interactions with your building inspector leading up to this. Bob here is the person behind the corporate entity that owns the property, which is as, for the record, 125 Lerner Street, known as tax map 218 lot 112. We'll just call it the property. The applicant was denied a permit relative to some interior renovations that he wanted to do back on December 20th. And as I learned tonight, the contractor that was here was actually in conversations with the building inspector for some time leading up to December 20th, going back and forth about, oh, what are we going to do with the windows? What are we going to do with the framing, et cetera? And then sort of got blindsided in the last 11th hour of the application and being told, oh, sorry, you've abandoned the property. And so, specifically, this permit was to renovate an existing three-bedroom dwelling, a three-dwelling unit building. This building is at least 100 years old, give or take. Is, for as long as anyone can remember, it has been a three-unit building. Those of you who were on the site walk certainly made note, for example, of the meters around the side of the building that designate three, three units. And this appeal is relative to the decision by the building inspector, nothing more or less. The denial letter claimed, yeah, as was said, the denial letter claimed that the permit was to convert that property into a three-dwelling building unit, but it has always been a three-dwelling building unit. The property and its structure are, as I said, pre-existing and non-conforming, built roughly in the late 1800s or 1900s. The property is very small, .06 acres in size. The dwelling is in dire need of some renovations, especially on the interior, and that's what we were trying to fix. There's certainly no dispute that the property doesn't conform to your zoning at this time for multifamily use. Now, the basis for your building inspector's decision is that this property has been abandoned because it was, quote, vacant. However, we dispute that conclusion as the applicant has been performing work, albeit slowly, over the years in order to get the dwelling ready for some final renovations. The property has had no tenants in the past several years due to a variety of reasons, not the least of which was COVID. He did have a few tenants after he bought the property back in 2017, and after a couple of years, eventually, they all moved out. And that was when he seized that opportunity. He did not want to re-rent those so that he could renovate the building. Then COVID hit. Then inflation hit. Building costs soared. So, there was a number of things that were just hamstringing the owner from getting ready to move. Now, your ordinance, the section at issue here, which is 175-43, big C, states the following: Any non-conforming use that is discontinued or abandoned for a period of one year or more cannot be resumed. However, the same section of the ordinance at big letter D, despite those restrictions, and here's pushback argument number one, does allow for an exception of maintenance, which he has been doing over the past several years. He has been, continued to upkeep the properties best he can. He has continued to pay property taxes on a three-bedroom unit, as per the tax cards. He continues to pay a water bill for a multifamily dwelling to the town, I believe. And he also has continued to pay the electrical bill for a three-unit dwelling, also to the town, as my understanding is, the town of Wolfboro has, provides your own electricity. The applicant has continued to do minor work with the expectation to do a proper renovation when time and finances allowed. As such, we contend that this property was simply never abandoned. Now, your ordinance, as I read it a second ago, is, is one short sentence. There's no dispute, as I said, that, you know, the property's use is non-conforming. What is in dispute, dispute, and this is the real issue. This is what it means at the end of the day. Does a lack of tenants qualify as abandoning? We say no. He continued to pay those taxes. He continued to maintain the property. He continued to get, seek professional services from contractors in order to renovate the property. And abandonment is not exactly clearly defined under the ordinance. The legal standard for what constitutes abandonment is a creature of case law, and there are two competing cases on this, the Lawler case and the McKenzie case. So, first, starting with the Lawler case, which is as old as I am, 1976, that's where the Supreme Court for New Hampshire came up with a test. And in there, they said this person did not abandon the property because they did not show an intent to abandon the property. And here is the test that the court said, and it needs two factors, and it needs them both. It is not an or, it's an and. One, an intention to abandon or relinquish the use, and, two, an overt act or failure to act which carries the implication that the owner neither claims nor retains any interest in the use. Again, that is the Lawler case. For the record, it is 116 NH 61 in 1976. Here, we contend he never abandoned the use, evidenced by his continued maintenance and upkeep. There was no overt act. And that's important because the New Hampshire Supreme Court holds that at a very high burden of proof on the government, that that overt act, he has to stand there with a megaphone saying, I abandoned this place in order for it to really rise to that level. Now, as I said, there's two cases here. So, let's talk about a case where they did find abandonment, and that was the McKenzie case. And I neglected to put this in my pleading, so I'll state it for the record. The opposite holding of McKenzie versus the town of Eaton, for the record, that is 154 NH 773, and that case is from 2007. There, the High Court did hold that the applicant in that matter abandoned the property. However, it's distinguishable because you have to look at the ordinance language. And there, the ordinance language, incidentally for that one, was a whole paragraph. But just focusing on the first sentence of the ordinance at issue in the McKenzie case, it reads as follows, and I quote, "Any structure damaged by fire, deterioration, or causality to the extent of 75% or more of the floor area in square feet and is not reconstructed within one year shall constitute discontinuance and abandonment." That is at the McKenzie case at page 774. The High Court essentially said, that was very specific, Town of Eaton. Therefore, your ordinance preempts that Lawler test. But in absence of that kind of specificity, the Lawler test is what controls. And so, here, you know, it says if you've abandoned the property after a year, then you've abandoned. You know, it's, you lose your pre-existing non-conforming rights, if you will. But does a lack of tenants rise to that abandonment? And we say no. He owns this place. He still owns this place. He's got plans for this place. It's evident that he had plans for this place. He continued to upkeep all the bills. He stayed, he stayed timely. He was never delinquent in any of the taxes or his insurance or any of that matter. And then when finally time and money allowed, that's when he comes in, and he was told no. So, again, that's basically the gist of it. We would hope to ask that you overturn your, your building official's decision and say that the property is not abandoned so that my client can proceed with renovating the place. I think those of you that were there today can, can attest to the fact, or at least would be agreeable to the fact, that the place needs a nice facelift, and that's what he intends to do. And as you also noted, he owns that other property that was right on the corner. You guys got a sense of, of the kind of work he does. He fixed that place up kind of nice. And then beyond that, I'll just say that, so there was a little bit of delay as well, I think administratively, because we were trying to get some kind of site plan as per your application requirements. Well, being that this property is 100 years old, there's never been a proper survey done. So, we had to makeshift with the tax maps and do our best, and we hope that is acceptable. I just didn't want, since this was all about, an argument about whether or not a use was abandoned, rather to have this guy have to spend $15,000 on an engineering firm to do a proper survey. So, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, we have the contractor and the owner here to answer any historical questions or technical questions you might have.
I have a question. I've gone through the building file, and I don't have the answer, but I'll ask you the question. Can you demonstrate for us that it's legally non-conforming? Or explain to us how you feel that it's legally non-conforming?
I mean, only non-conformities under your own, under today's ordinance, I don't think, I think for him to have three units in that building, he's got to come here and ask for relief on, but it's already been there, is the point.
Okay. And then I...
The original building permit does say three units.
What?
The original building permit?
Yeah.
Does say three units.
Okay. Okay. I find several conflicting statements in your application in that it's this way in one hand, and then it's this way on the other hand. And that's your job. So, I guess the question that I have is that the applicant has been performing ongoing work, and has he gotten building permits for that ongoing work?
I think most of it was stuff that didn't need to be permitted. Have you? Paint, painting, things like that. I mean, not, not anything that would require him to come, come to the town and get a, pull a permit, I don't think.
Can you be more specific as to, over the last six or seven years, what was done besides painting?
You're going to have to use the microphone?
I actually would, I, I kind of would like to have both your narrative, but also some paperwork to show what that was.
So...
You'll have to get closer to your microphone.
Introduce yourself. Yep. Robert Flannery. So, we've done some paint work, maybe replaced some exterior trim, that type of thing. We, we jacked up some flooring in there, type of things. Nothing that required permits, in my opinion.
Did you change any windows?
No.
So, they were already done before you purchased the property?
Correct. But we were going to, our plan was to modernize the, they are a vinyl window.
I noticed.
But they're an older style, so we wanted to replace those and update those.
So, you did some painting, and you did some exterior trim?
Correct.
And you said you did something to the inside?
Yeah, we jacked up the floor.
And like, what was the, what was the, like, can you be more specific? What did you do to jack up the floor?
Just to level it out.
Did you create new supports underneath?
No.
You, how did you, what did you do exactly?
Probably shim those up. I mean, there, there is existing, you know, structure, and they had to hold the floors up, but we just jacked them up.
Do you have any invoices from anything, any contractors or any rental equipment or anything that you used to do that?
I'm sure I could...
That would be very helpful.
Yeah. But I don't have that. I wasn't prepared for that.
I, I understand that.
Yep.
Okay. Probably, I'll ask you this other question. I'm not sure you're the one to answer it.
I've got some more questions, too.
Okay. Let me just ask this one. So, in his 20, in the December denial, it says that your contractor tried submitting a building permit to convert and renovate the building to three dwelling units, which is what he based this denial on. Do you have a copy of that building permit that was submitted?
I do not personally have that. I don't know the may.
Your contractor?
Don't worry about it. The paperwork, the paperwork that you had, do you, but there is some somewhere?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I suppose we could provide that to you subsequently.
And what was your contractor's name?
Matt, what was your last name? I'm sorry.
Montief.
Montief?
Yeah.
Matthew Montief of Morning Star Renovations, for the record.
Do you know who Gavin Douglas is?
Yes. He's, he's one of my employees.
Okay. So, here we have a building permit application with no date on it from Gavin Douglas. Has a construction cost, total fee, there's no other stamp or anything on it, but the construction description says, add one kitchen to second floor, add wall to create new two-bedroom, one-bath apartment.
What's the date?
No date. So, can you explain why that would be there?
Well, obviously, he's an employee of mine, and I think at one time, we had come in, I had a meeting with the building inspector and the, was it, I can't remember the prior planner, but we had talked about doing a four unit, and he said, well, you're not going to be able to do a four unit. It's, it's three, and that's it.
Why, why, why couldn't you do four units because of the...
Well, we're changing, it'd be non-conforming, so that...
Okay. You'd have to have more park, you'd have to have parking, et cetera.
Correct.
I think in, in doing so, that would create more non-conformity and...
The variance.
So, he said, stick with three, three units.
Okay.
Okay. I got, I got a few follow along with me. Okay. So, in 2021, a permit was applied for, for 125 Lerner Street for AGC Electric, and that was returned, and it was said, as the proposed renovation does not meet code, please note a new permit will be needed to apply for, for any work on this property. Your predecessor that owned the house, I guess, Wilkins, Stephen Wilkins, he got a permit for interior, well, he had an application for interior renovation and remodeling, and he pulled plaster walls and lathing, insulated, hung drywall. I don't know if there's a occupancy permit ever issued with that. Audrey, you get the file? It went through the, the routing slip for the, what the heck they call them? What's that?
Technical review.
Technical review. Thank you. And I don't know who this is, but wrote, whatever, whatever this is for, no until changed. So, I don't know, but...
This, that's Rob's writing. It says, what is this for? Question mark, no unit change are. So, he wrote a little arrow up to the planning line, which he signed off on. So, he's saying, what is this electric permit for? It doesn't say. But there should be no change in the number of units approved with this, is what he meant.
Okay. I don't, I don't find any occupancy permits anywhere.
I'm not sure that...
And so, my, I guess what I'm saying, when was it last lived in? Not, not just when was the last work done in the, in the interior or on the building, but when was it last occupied?
Suzanne, did you, did you read that the, the electricals were unsafe?
No. It's in 2021, an electrical permit was applied for. It doesn't say what for.
I thought it said...
But it was rejected because it does not meet code, which we don't know what that means.
So, in 2021, a building, an electrical building permit was denied because it was not to code?
It does not meet code. And I don't know what that means because there's no description of what it was for.
I, I didn't apply for that permit. My electrician did.
So, do you know if it's, the building is to code at this point or not?
Well, he was going to replace what was there anyway, so he would have brought it up to code. So, I'm not, I'm a little bit confused by that.
Did he in fact do that or not?
No, he never got the permit. He wasn't, he didn't get the permit. I'm not sure why he didn't get it.
So, it's not to code?
That, that's, that's, they're not necessarily saying that the existing building was not to code. I think what he's saying is, whatever the proposed work was, doesn't meet...
Proposed work doesn't meet...
I want to say code. It probably means zone.
And I think that was when we were... And I think that was when we were asking to convert to a four unit versus the current three unit.
That makes sense.
So is the electrical currently on?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I just want to go through this-
If there's any, if there's any code issues, we will fix those.
So that makes sense, that makes sense, that it may have gone with this building permit to-
I just want to go through this few applications. And Audrey's got a file there, she can elaborate.
But I, but I think at the end of the day, what we're saying is, we haven't abandoned it. Just by these permits or show that.
There was another application submitted and a check went along with that. And this is Rawlingsford. I don't see the date. But it was for one added kitchen and second floor added wall to create second bedroom.
That's what Audrey had.
Yeah.
That's the one I asked about originally.
Okay. And is it an occupancy permit or anything?
It wasn't done because it wasn't allowed.
Okay.
And this all dovetails into when we're asking for a four unit.
And here's one on the electrical. And it was previous, it was Wilkins. And it was upgrade service entrance from 60 amp to 200 amp and rewire upstairs bedroom. I don't know what happened to that.
Well, they, they end up having three meters, so that must have been when that was done. And it was quite some time ago before you purchased it.
Okay. So then, I guess I, I will go back to the question again, is when was it last occupied? When did you, when were last, when was the last time tenants were in there and it was occupied?
Probably just before 2020.
When? And in your, is it okay if I keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. In your application, you say, the applicant has continued over years to upkeep the property with the intent of doing a full-blown renovation. And the applicant has played, continued to pay property tax. Well, that's a given. It's, whether it's occupied or not occupied, unless the town takes it over, we're all, we're all stuck with property taxes. But here's-
But it does, does, does go to the, the story of whether it's abandoned, which is why we're here.
Well, I'm, I'm sure that the property taxes took into consideration it's whether it's occupied or not. They have a formula. I don't know how to, to tell you.
I guess my point is that if we had abandoned the property, we'd probably stop paying taxes on it.
Well, we have, we have a copy of the tax bill here, I could-
I think, it speaks to intent, just circling back, if I may, to the law on this, that the Supreme Court has said, is you look at the intent. If he's paying his property taxes, he's paying his utilities, he's making an attempt in 2021 to upgrade it from a three to four bedroom, albeit unsuccessfully, that all speaks to the fact that he's not just dumping this place in the ground and forgetting about it.
Well, let, let me keep going. The applicant has continued to pay water, a water bill for multifamily and electric bill. And I didn't check on the electric bill, but I do know that the water and sewer bill is the minimum amount the town can charge just to keep you in the system. It's not being used. There's no water and sewer going in and out of that building. There again, it references that it's not occupied. Then we have over here, number 27. It speaks to actively maintaining the property. And again, it's like, to do what? What was done? I don't see the applicant coming in with a list of things that have been done with building permits and that they were compliant with whatever the town would require for building permits. And then he goes on to say, admit that the building needs repair. And so for how long has it needed repair?
Well, it couldn't have been lived in the last two years because it doesn't have any steps.
And it doesn't have water and sewer running.
Well, that can be turned on.
And the tax, the tax card says there's no steps.
There's steps into the rear of the building.
Not in the front, there's no steps. What's there, you can't, I couldn't climb up them.
They're not code compliant.
And then it goes on to say, there have been no tenants at the building in, is, has not been suitable for habitation for quite a while. That's what I'm getting at. If it's not suitable for habitation, then he's willfully abandoned it.
He has not willfully abandoned it, he's been, he has been hamstringed by economy, COVID, and a number of other things, and an attempt to turn the place into three units into four units. A lack of tenants does not mean abandonment. That is the issue.
Well, you're given the excuse why it's been unoccupied. And I would say this board will have to decide if they feel those excuses are acceptable and meet your criteria.
So Suzanne, can I ask a question here?
What?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Their contractor is here. Could we ask, like, how many man-hours have you put into that house over the last, however many years you've been employed?
Matt, come on up to the microphone. And if you could, make sure you introduce yourself for the record and maybe explain the interactions you had with the building official leading up to the denial.
Matthew Montief, Morning Star Renovations. Weeks, months?
You're gonna have to use the microphone, please.
Like, few weeks, months, over the years. I used to be an employee, but now I own my own company. And we were trying to get a building permit to renovate the building.
Right, so over there, so how long were you working for him?
Three years, three, four years.
Three or four years. And, and over three or four years, how many man-hours or man weeks did you work on the property?
Mostly just repair.
Repair.
Trying to-
Fix stuff up.
Keep up with the place.
Sure, but how many, how many hours, how many hours or, you know, how many weeks did you, of labor did you put into it?
Like, a month, probably? That, you know, spread out.
A month's worth of work over three or four years?
Not three years, not three or four years, probably about. I, I think I started working on it a year ago. Yeah, or, no, sorry, two years ago.
Okay, and just basic repairs, like we talked about, like exterior trim, paint, jacking up floors?
Yep.
That sort of thing, yeah?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Suzanne, could we see if anybody else wants to speak before we go too much further?
Who? Yeah, well, I haven't gotten that file yet.
Oh, okay. I, I just, I think this is a legal question based on-
What?
My, my wondering whether the amount of time and work does mean abandonment. I don't think we know that. I think we need to discuss this with our attorney.
No, I think what I'm trying to get into the record is what-
Right.
-what has been accomplished, what has had permits, what the permits-
Right.
-were approved or what permits were not approved. And it really is the applicant's job to come in here with a, with a, a document that demonstrates all that, and we haven't got that.
But that doesn't prove abandonment or not abandonment.
Though, that's, that's going to be a legal question. Again, we're not, I don't think we're qualified to judge that without further advice.
And that's what we're here for.
No advice from our attorney.
I agree with her.
So I'm, I'm getting the sense that the board would like me to open this up to public comment?
I think you did, because they're speaking.
Is there anybody? What's that?
You already opened the public meeting.
No, I, I'm not-
Someone who wants to speak.
No, I'm talking about, would somebody like to speak?
Yes, yes.
That's where I'm going.
Yes.
And either for or against, or just your general concerns? And state your name, please, for the record.
Hi, Torrance Stagemeyer. I am in a butter to the property. I own the property at 119 Laner Street. I believe if you went to the walkthrough of the property, you probably utilized my driveway that's right in between the two buildings. Give you a sense of how close and how much I probably know about this property. I've owned our building since 2019. I've been in that house before. I know Alden, which I believe is the other partner in the LLC. So the, the building is in need of repair. If somebody has lived there in the last 20 years, I would be shocked. I'm not saying it's abandoned, I'm not making that judgment, I'm just saying this house does need to be repaired. So maybe I could ask a question. What is the repercussions if this is deemed abandoned or not? That's something I really don't quite understand, just being a neighbor to this debate.
So-
Yeah.
If it's deemed abandoned, it's no longer legally nonconforming. And it can do anything that's allowed in the C1 district, or it can get variances for things that aren't.
Just a clarification, the C1 does allow a three unit?
It does.
Okay, and that's-
Only with a certain amount of land area that this property does not have.
And parking.
If they did get this, if it was deemed not abandoned, they just pulled a building permit to fix it, they don't need any special exclusions to just do what they please and we can get this house fixed up?
Not from zoning.
Okay.
There might be something in the building in the fire code, but that's not us.
Understood. Well, I wish you luck with your decision. Definitely, I know you went there and saw the exterior, the interior is probably similar grade, if, like, could make a neutral comment.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I don't think we can tell how long people can keep their thumb in the dyke. And I think that's what it comes down to, for me. And again, I think that's a legal question. I don't know. I don't, I, I don't know.
You don't know what?
How long somebody can keep their, their finger in the dyke with doing, you know, that wouldn't be abandoned. It's not that, just that there aren't people in it, it's also wasn't prepared to be advertised for rent, you know?
Well, it's more than, it's more than two years. It's been-
Oh, it's way more.
It's been like-
Yeah. So I think it's a-
It's been like since, since he bought it, whenever that was.
Again, I think it's a legal question, one way or the other, that we need to ask our attorney.
And again, to clarify, if it, if we believe that it is abandoned, it simply means he has to go through, jump, jump through more hoops to renovate-
A process, a process.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't say jump through hoops. He has to go, I'm sorry. He has to go through a process. And he would be applying for a variance to continue with three units?
Well, I, I'm not going to get into what he may have to do, other than there is a process-
To continue working on, to renovate the building.
To bring it into compliance, to do what he wants to do.
Keep in mind, he said he could put anything in there that's allowed in the C1 district by right. It's not like he's, has to have one, two, or three or four units. He can have those if he wants to get the necessary variances, if that's what's required. But he could have a business, he could have an inn, he could have, you know, any number of things that are allowed in the C1 district.
It's all part, it's all part of the process that I, I didn't want to-
I know, but I-
I didn't want to spell it out.
I wanted, well, I think it's important.
It helps me to understand it.
So is it appropriate for me to move that we continue this case so we can consult
That, that's an option. I'd like to, like to just put a couple other things in the record. It was brought up about the, the tax map, or the tax map and he pays taxes. Well, in 2023, there was an assessor in the property and he said, during this cyclical review, it appears vacant. And there are no front steps. That was in '23. So we know, according to the tax assessor, it appeared vacant then. That's substantiated by a town employee official. So here, here are our options. As I read in the beginning, we could approve this and amend it. I don't have it in front of me. We can modify it. We could approve it and say, yes, but, well, let's, let's do something else here. Is there something else you'd like to say?
I, I guess I'll just, if I may, direct, circle back to what the Supreme Court has said about the abandonment in general. In that if it's not specifically defined, you have to consider the intent. Okay? And if, if a lack of tenants qualifies as abandonment, then your ordinance should have said so. And it doesn't. So I'm just going to leave it at that as far as legal arguments, but otherwise, we defer to you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'd like to qualify that last, last remark, lack of tenants. I don't think it's just about tenants, it's a house. It's a lack of occupancy. Doesn't have to be tenants. It could be the business. But it's a lack of occupancy.
But does that mean abandon, abandonment?
Well, that's what we're here to decide.
That's what I'm saying. It's like-
So the, the question from Chuck was, do we want to continue this and get legal advice? Do we want to take this application and say, we support the building official's decision, but with any modification that we think we should put on it? Do we want to say we don't support the building official's decision?
I would like to continue it and get legal advice.
You'd like to what?
Continue it and get legal advice, based on the, you know, on the information that we gathered tonight.
Okay, I hear two people saying that. So I will therefore make the motion that we continue this meeting until June.
June 2nd.
Thank you. You read on the ball on that. June 2nd, 6 o'clock, here in the town hall. For the purposes of seeking legal advice, on the building inspector's interpretation of, I think he didn't call it abandonment.
He didn't use the word abandonment.
I think he-
But he did quote the section.
He used discontinuance. Okay, second?
Second.
I got a second. Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Ryan, yes?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. So my agenda, you all get notices of decision. It's not just for, to start the fire with, it's to read and understand what we did and why we did it. With that said, I'd like to thank Shauna for her extended attendance with us this evening.
Yeah, thank you. Outside of your normal part-time hours.
It's very, very nice to have-
No, that's fine.
Very nice to have a staff person here.
Absolutely. And I can be here anytime you guys need me to be, so just throwing that out there.
Oh, great, okay.
Really quickly with the legal counsel, we had talked about meeting with legal counsel again regarding a potential application that we may be getting, again, prior to, I would, I could add this, so that we, we would talk right prior to the meeting?
Double it up.
Yep, okay.
Good idea.
Okay, I will do that.
Sounds good.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
No, no, I have something else.
I'm sorry.
On the notice of decision for the Atwell on Elm-
Yeah.
-that we got. There's some conditions on here that we didn't discuss in the meeting.
Well, that, that, the reason, the reason that this is messed up, the minutes, is because there's a whole first part of the meeting-
Wasn't.
-that wasn't recorded. So that's, we'll have to take care of that. I don't know where that came from.
Oh, okay.
And I'm, I'm usually the one that reads those conditions and they've got it underneath your motion. And I know you didn't read them because you don't have them.
And you didn't read them because I read the tape.
You did?
I mean, I, I listened to the meeting, there were no, we didn't put any conditions on. Now, whether or not you meant to, I don't know, but they're not appropriate for this approval.
So what, which ones, which are the conditions?
Atwell, all of them.
Which, all of them?
We didn't put any conditions.
We didn't, but number six says, it talks about the two- We didn't, but number six says, it talks about the two years from the date for a variance approval. And this wasn't, we didn't end up giving a variance approval.
Right, right.
Or, or a variance denial.
Yep.
So that one's definitely out.
Yep.
But the other ones, the appeal, appeal is correct, you know, 30 days. And I think I mentioned that in the meeting. I said, you know, there's a 30-day appeal period. Parking spaces shall be constructed per the 1981 site plan approval? I mean, I haven't really gone through these. Did we say that in the meeting? We might have, you know, held it up and said it, but we didn't actually list conditions.
I think, I think the only condition, and I, and I don't, I know that you wouldn't have had read those because that's my boilerplate.
Yeah.
I think what you put on was the appeal, of which I also spoke. And I don't know if you set it specifically under by what statute. I don't think so. I think you just said there's a 30-day appeal period.
Right.
That's all.
Anyway, so we might need to amend this.
We'll have to amend that.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. And that's kind of what I was looking for. But we would amend it at another meeting? Or one of you would come in and talk to me about amending it? Or how, how, I mean, we, if you wanted to go through it right now, I don't mind going through and letting me, let me know which.
I, I guess I would want to listen to the meeting and see.
Okay.
What we spoke, you know.
Take, take it home and listen to the tape.
Yeah, and it, and it does say notice of decision variance, which it did come in that way, but we ended up not hearing a variance.
Well, it has to have that same case number with a V in it.
It does. Yep, and the same legal notice.
I can do that.
That has to stay that way.
I will, I will take a look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm happy to talk to you about some of the thinking to, behind some of the conditions if, if you wanted to give me a call or whatever.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, then, second on that motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At 10 to 9. Okay.